I think the bottom fell out because they bought too many polos.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Page City Council's work session. It's June 28th, 2017, and it is 5:33 PM. I'd like to call this meeting on order. I'm Bert, if you please. If you roll call for us.
Counselor Bryan.
Here.
Counselor Sadler. Excused.
Take excuse.
Counselor Tappan.
Here.
Counselor Seiler.
Here.
Counselor Warner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kojin.
Here.
Mayor Diaw.
Here. We have one item on our agenda this evening for discussion only, and that's discussion of city council pertaining to improvements, funding, and ownership of city property adjacent to Forest Sheben. I'd like also for the record, say that we have the Park Service and the workshop with us this evening. That being said, if Mr. Schatz, Superintendent Schatz, would go ahead and introduce who he has with him.
Yeah, absolutely. Came as a small team that we run in packs. Got our Assistant Superintendent Pam Rice, and she's here to actually describe some of the numbers that we've done, and she's able to run some numbers as we sit here today as well. There's an endless amount of scenarios.
Do a hundred scenarios.
And then we have a project manager for the Sheben project, which is Michelle Zia, even matter of her IDT, and then myself.
Thank you.
Crystal.
Hey, here. This is really a continuation of the conversation that the City Council and Park Service has been having in terms of ownership and management scenarios. The last time we discussed ownership and looked at this, the City Council said they wanted to continue to keep all of their options open and have continuing conversations. Maybe a month ago, May 19th, I guess, it's over a month ago, the Assistant Superintendent Rice provided some possible scenarios, which you had in your packet tonight. They include land sale, land exchange, and land donation, and then the city maintains ownership and collect fees. And then today, we got some additional scenarios, as Billy said, which you should have in front of you. So with that, I'm just going to turn it back over to the Park Service, and they can walk us through the scenarios that uses the council.
Before Pam goes through the scenarios that we've had here, just any questions up front? Just start to address those, get through anything lingering from our old discussion. Now, Coram, this is the quietest I've seen you.
That's a good thing.
Okay, sounds good.
Scenarios of Park Service pushing.
We do have a preferred alternative, and we'll cover that. You'll see, we've identified it. So you know what we're talking about up front. But there's a lot of details. As we start to walk through these, we probably came up with half a dozen more. There's several different ways we could go, especially when you start to attach timelines and combining different options with different outcomes. So we've discussed about potential for a land swap or a land sale. And so one of the things I'd like to discuss today, once we wrap our heads around numbers and benefits, is what could be put into place potentially that gets us to a resolution? And that resolution could be, there will never be a land swap, there will never be a land sale. That's off the table completely. How do we manage this over time? Or do we want to shoot for a date to where we do pursue that, right? And we've come up with an interesting scenario here that, for the life of me, I don't know why we haven't considered it before. We thought about it about...
About two hours ago.
Two hours ago.
Just why it's so late coming in.
So, but that's all right. I think there's more brainstorming to be done. I imagine you guys have brainstormed yourselves. So hopefully we can go through all those and see where we're at. So with that said, if there's no other questions, I'll leave it up to Pam to explain these scenarios. I know this is all new information, not just today, and you'll find that there's questions still. But Pam, can you give us at least?
So the first scenario is if the city were to collect fees. This is the same as what we quickly got together right before your last meeting. The only difference, I think Crystal or somebody had mentioned that we originally had four, or five, or six dollars, and that that was on the high side, so I switched it to three, four, and five dollars per person, just to give an idea of what the revenue would be. The next scenario is if we, while we can't collect fees on non-federal land, if we lease the fee booth from you, then it becomes permissible for us to collect fees. So if we were to set up a lease agreement, basically a no-cost lease agreement, we could collect the fees and then share a portion of those back with you through a cooperative agreement. And so that's what the second scenario would look like. The one thing is if we collect fees, any fee-collecting park, 20% goes into a pot that helps support non-collecting parks. So less than half the national park units collect fees, so that fund helps provide project funds for projects at other parks that don't have their own fee revenue. And that's what that required, 20% to non-collecting parks column is. And then we could split the remainder, negotiate how that would be split. This, I, because we assume that visitors that go to Sheben likely are not multi-day visitors, we think that we could get approval to pursue a one- or two-day pass. Version right now, if you want a Glen Canyon entrance pass, it's a seven-day pass for $25. So we could pursue a one- or two-day pass for like $10. And so that, this scenario also assumes that we would have a new fee structure that would better meet the needs of visitors, so that if they wanted to just come and spend an hour or two going out to Sheben, they didn't feel like they were paying a really high price of $25 per car.
And that's currently how it is, right?
Right.
That's the current structure.
That's the current structure.
If you were to introduce a new structure, would that cover the whole recreation area?
It would, yeah, yeah.
For the time, right?
Yeah, I think it's awesome.
It'd be a whole new structure.
Because I'm dealing with people every day, and that's one of the number-one things is, I'm only going to be here two days, why am I paying $20 per car?
Right, right.
I just think that's a really good idea.
We've seen more and more of our activity become land-based and more local in nature. Not only informs us of the PD for trails, but things to do locally with that, we see a hierarchy structure.
Anyway, I'm going to stop you again.
No, 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 please, interrupt with questions as we go.
Add on to what you were just saying, I had a similar conversation with Billy about this. And one of the things that he brought up is he felt that this was, would be a great hat-on for visitation at Glen Canyon, because people now, the fee is the 14-day pass. And, correct, when they go through the gate.
Seven days.
Seven days. And they're here for one or two days, and they feel that that's cost productivity. If they do this, they can get two days there, that they might go out there, look around, might even say, gee, let's take a boat tour, or something like that, where otherwise they're passing, just passing it by.
Yeah, people are on route, turn around all the time to make that move. They just want to go out to see the beach, and they don't want to pay $25 per gallon.
Right.
So just out of curiosity, and this is very beginning stages, so would it be your intent, do you feel at this point, to offer the one- or two-day pass at all fee booth stations in Glen Canyon?
Yeah, once we implement that structure, it becomes partland.
Okay, so that's it, I'm sorry.
And there would be a public input process. We wouldn't just do it overnight. We'd have to figure out for comment, and just like, what was it, a couple of years ago, when we increased fees, it would be the same kind of process. There'd be a lot of public notification, opportunity to comment.
So what's stopping that process now from implementing a shorter-term purpose?
Nothing.
We just would need to get Washington approval, because it's outside the normal structure.
But as far as our decision to move forward with it, we've been thinking about it over the last year as part of our strategic plan, as in not as the fact that we've got more day visitation. Will we, you know, what do you go about it intelligently?
I guess, yeah, I'm speaking without Sheben.
Right, and hearing the response that we've heard today, maybe we need to go back and look at getting that approval sooner rather than later, and not make it, you know, associating necessarily with this.
Okay, I just think it's awesome. I wish it would have been done a long time ago, but there is a tremendous amount of people who you could bring in to the recreation area that if you can do a lower fee in a shorter time, you'd do it.
So we have to do the scoping, and so if we wanted to change our structure today, let's say we wanted to just increase our prices for the fees, because the scoping that Pam's referencing, the process, and then implement it. For this particular change to a structure, it would also require a waiver. So I don't want to speak for the park over the last several years, probably maybe you can, if you like to. But it hasn't been a welcome change from our agency, so now that we've got reasons, including the fact that we've got a change of visitation that we can articulate, and we've got a proposal like this on the table, whichever way we end up going, it makes it intelligent reason to do it.
Well, and we can also now say we have support from the City Council in this. And it was actually, we were just on a phone call with the fee program manager in Washington, and Rocky Mountain, about a year and a half ago, started a pilot with a one-day pass. And at first, she was kind of hesitant, but by the end of the phone call, she, it seems like we could likely get approval, was the feeling, I got. Is that what you agree with, Michelle? So, I mean, that's something that I think we can look into for next year.
I would think that concessionaire would block this type of a plan also, because I can only see it adding to their visitor experience and the numbers that they would receive also.
I think there's some benefits for the entire community. The folks coming here for a day, for a day now, there's a reason.
Some more reason to stay.
For an extra day, extra hotel room. There's probably some unintended consequences that we're not aware of yet, but that's part of our consideration.
Like opening up all three booths.
Hey, easy, easy.
I'm going to give my digs in what I can.
We'll talk about cost of collection soon, something you'll have to consider as well.
They know where the breakers for that third booth.
Yeah.
They're all free open today, but there's no lines.
So I'd like to just talk a little bit more about that. So the scenarios and your thoughts in your mind essentially are, with this fee sharing, is that the city could potentially be involved in collecting the fees. If we decided to do that on our own, it could be a potential fee share back to the park, or that there is an MPS model, whereas the booth is leased to you, or a mixture of the two as well? I mean, is there another scenario?
Well, there's two more on the backside of your page, three more, sorry. So, I mean, I'll keep going. The last thing I'll say about scenario two is, I did number of vehicles, because that's how our fee structure is, it's per vehicle, not per person. That first line is 500,000 people, so it equates to that first grouping on the first scenario. Based on a few months at South Lawwee, it looked like about 2.75 people on average per car. So I divided that 500,000 by 2.75, and took a swag that I think about 65% would actually pay entrance fees. The others will be commercial vehicles, they'll already have an annual pass or a park pass, they got it at a different entrance. And so that's how I came up with that 118,000 vehicles. And then the next line would be comparable to the 750,000 in the last line for the million visitors. Just so that you're kind of comparing three different scenarios essentially.
Anthony, what were our most recent projections on Sheben visitation?
We're on par this year to have a million visitors come through this calendar year, based on what we've seen in the last few months.
Heads or cars?
Heads, yeah.
Yeah, walk on the draw.
Would you agree, Michelle? So, on the next page, the third scenario, and this was the one that we just thought of two or three hours ago. If the city wanted to put up some kind of temporary fee booth that we could lease, we could look at doing some kind of model where after cost of collection and our required 20%, that the rest of the fees would cover the city's portion of the day-to-day maintenance, and that the remainder could be given to the city to save up for phase two of the project out there. And depending on visitation, it could be as little as two years before there might be enough to actually pay for the parking lot, the visitor contact station, the bathrooms. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that it could be part of some kind of agreement, possibly that leads either to a land sale or land exchange, or to some other long-term arrangement between the city and the park.
It changes phase one, as we know, from the level group, well, the one group, right? Because that pays, right now, we don't collect any fees until phase two's completed. Phase two's the most expensive portion of the phases. And so I had a kick in myself that we didn't think about including what the fee route could look like in the parking level for phase one, to start to pay for phase two. But it's something that we could incorporate if we started thinking about today, and it solves a lot of problems for us. It enables us to complete phase one, two, and even three, if you went that far, without having to spend any of the money that you guys are putting up right now with the city budget. It also solves the issue for us, how we get money in effort to build infrastructure that either joins or is not on parkland, because we can build in the cost sharing in the fee structure. Where we were not able to do that anywhere else. So, something to think about. And it's a curve ball, because it's, we've already kind of, we figured out how to pay for phase one. It doesn't include the fee station out there. It bumps up that timeline, and that's something that we have to consider with our public in the community as well, in visitors, but I thought it was worthwhile putting out there, because it solves a couple of problems.
What we're doing here, moving to, is it gives us an avenue to pay for the new structures that we're wanting to put in there. And then once that's done, it allows us to think beyond that and have a source of revenue for maybe further plans or way down the road that we've talked about. And that's a continuation of a trail system.
Right. The larger phase two.
The larger phase.
On the grand scheme, right. It also gives us opportunity to put on a roadmap, you know, the resolution with the land out there as well. There's quite a few expenses starting to pile up. Right now, we're not having to consider the continued maintenance of the facilities, the cost of managing not only the restroom that are out there today, in the small park lot, but what those expenses happen, what would occur with expenses over time, is starting to work on deferred maintenance rather than just a larger footprint out there. I think right now, we're estimating it's about $170,000 a year to get that work done on the small footprint. None of those, that estimate is just the labor. It doesn't take into account the equipment that's required to do that maintenance. And Michelle, you can add anything you think that we're not considering. But I just think about the basic things like pumpouts.
Some of that maintenance go, might go down once we get past, at a phase two, and we have a different type of system out there too. In the restrooms, that's what I was talking about, because we're finding that what we've got out there now in the vaults is probably going to require a lot more pumping than what we're talking about for into phase two. Is that correct?
It is correct, but the larger footprint will probably offset that. There'll be more bathrooms, stalls to clean. You can't just spray them out, they actually have to be cleaned like the rest of it. It really takes a long time. But the vault pumping will likely decrease, yes, because there'll be more fish.
So through our current agreement with the restrooms right now, what are we paying the park in order to maintain those restrooms?
This year, just under 150. I budgeted 160 for next year. We've done some ordinary numbers she gave me, so that's what's in the budget.
Michelle, when are, or, Billy, what is your timeline for completion of phase one improvements?
Our timeline for the trail and the viewing platform?
Yeah.
Next spring.
Next winter?
Spring.
By next spring. So that, the improvements will include rim view area, the full trail if we participate with our side, and the phase one parking improvements, and those will be ready to launch into next spring.
And shade structures, and at the last meeting that you were not able to attend, Monument at the Road.
The Road Monument, okay. So by this coming season next year, the visitor will have a new trail, new rim view area, and somewhat improved parking, right? So is that, would that be a good opportunity to consider that option, or scenario three, for a temporary fee booth?
I think it would be, if that's the direction we want to go.
It just seems like, because all of a sudden, that's when we've stepped up the game out there, what people have been wanting and definitely needed.
Yeah, it's nice to show progress, but at the same time, that you start to pour some revenue to help support that. So I like the time you have.
Do either of you remember the cost of the shade shelter, the AIS?
Oh, the shade shelter for AIS.
Because that included a swamp cooler, and wasn't it about $10,000?
It's probably about, right, yeah.
Anyway, it's something I need to know.
We're putting some shade structures in for the AIS, the muscle programs on the ramps.
The people doing all the work.
Just to get our boys out of the heat. Right, out of the heat, and get State of Utah in there, so on out of the heat, a place to do the business all together. So that's what Pam's referencing, giving an idea of what these things might look like, cost-wise.
I agree on that.
Is there any thought on that decrease of traffic when there's a fee, when the fee is started charging?
I mean, there's no way to know how it might impact it, which I guess is why we give a range. With as many visitors that we have now, unless there was some major economic situation in our country, I can't imagine it being reduced under half a billion.
I can't either, and especially because the visitors want to pay us fees. They, we're out there, and so why aren't you charging fees? They, you know, five bucks, I don't see it.
And the thing about that is, is that fee, that ten, if we go with like one of these scenarios, that $10 fee would also give them a two-day park fee along with that. So I think that that's, that's something, right now, they don't have and wouldn't have if we're not going to implement something like this.
Some folks will show up with a park pass.
It would also help.
They've already had access, right? So they have their Gold Age pass, so they wouldn't have to.
Yes, we would.
Best deal in the world.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say, is that some folks would still come in, but they wouldn't pay a fee. That would be collected in these scenarios, because they weren't paying to assist.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we just move through on and do.
I'd like to say that, because it interests great value in having that type of continuity in the public lands out here. Something I'd like everyone to consider is, you have the option, one of the scenarios that we could look at and agree to is have the city build their fee collection up there as well, and go into an arrangement where we share those fees on the other side. But we need to think hard about that, and we haven't even considered that fully in the National Park Service, what that looks like going into public land. Essentially, the city would be paying or charging a park fee. And I don't know if that's what we want to try to explain to our visitors that come through, trying to collect a fee, or repay a fee to give them public lands, especially with the Monument. I think there's a value, some folks in the room may disagree about having a brand like this, taking your money. It's self-explanatory at that point, what they're putting the money toward. Something to think about, maybe it's even somewhat philosophical, but.
Cory, remember.
So under this new scenario here, and ongoing with phase one, is it enough to just have the restrooms there legally to actually charge fees to get into that area? So essentially, it's being leased to the Park Service?
Cory, the area out there is already a fee area. You can collect fees there today at our boundaries. So the authority is there. You guys can collect fees for parking at any time as well.
The only reason I mention that is, you probably know, I mean, there was a very recent case where it said, you know, fees cannot be collected unless some kind of service is rendered. And the restrooms, I think, would suffice, you know, I mean.
Actually, it's different for national parks. You must have heard, that's true for BLM and Forest Service lands. They cannot charge an entrance fee to get into their public lands. They can charge, if there's trails, or bathrooms, or picnic area, camping ground, that kind of an amenity fee, but you're right, they can't charge just to enter the national forest or BLM public lands. Parks fortunately are in a different category, and we can charge the basic entrance fee.
And we would have an accessible trail, improvements.
Yeah, we, just to be clear, we would not entertain any collection until improvements have been made, at least on phase one.
I think it would take us that long to get it set up and give it the fee booth, and for us, if we wanted to change our fee structure, that is going to take, you know, some time. Probably not a huge amount of time.
So one question I had, on your math here, what, where is the revenue side from the city standpoint for a park pass, senior citizen pass, Golden Age Pass, all those free passes? Where do you expect to, I mean, if we went with your scenario here, where we're simply charging three or four dollars per person, and then we share 50% or 40% of that, that's simple math.
Right.
But it comes a little more complicated where we've got 118,000 vehicles with a two-day park pass of $10, but 50% of those have a park pass.
Well, the 118,000 vehicles is assuming that only 65% of vehicles are paying a fee.
Okay. So you've already built in that.
You built that factory.
I did.
It's our best estimate, it's impossible to say.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's, I think you're high. I think that there will be fewer passes than that. Of course, I'm not, you know what's coming through your gate, though.
And it's hard to know how many commercial vehicles are coming out there. I want to, I could make a case for any too high or too low.
That was my other question. Is there any park fees set up already that only does commercial operations out there? That only charges commercial?
If you're a commercial operation, you have to have a commercial use authorization permit, and that comes with some fees associated with it.
But they also have, you also have like a bus entrance, which is different. Correct, so.
It's a good fee structure for the buses, yeah, but it's still associated with the commercial business.
Yeah.
We just don't know exactly how many of those we have out there. We know a lot, and now it's on the, it's become, you know, if you talk to the VOR today, they'll tell you that the issue that they had last year with their restrooms, which we also maintain, is all but gone, because now the buses are stopping, and we're seeing them take their business out there, so.
So that would be, that in your mind, for buses specifically, would be set up the same way?
Right. Well, if we had few of those, you wouldn't have people coming in just to use the bathroom.
Right. Which they are doing now, they're pulling in there, using the bathroom, and they're logging in.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is there a fee structure that you guys already have a place just to charge those buses that want to come and use our bathrooms?
Yeah, Horseshoe Bend, because we don't have an entrance station, there's a lot that are getting by without paying, because we don't have an easy way to enforce it.
Thank you. Counselor.
To God, the United States of America, and to your brother, for his presence, one nation, under God, in his rule, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor, please be called.
Counselor Ryan.
Here.
Counselor Sliderman.
Excuse me.
Counselor Sliderman.
Here.
Counselor Warner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pogen.
Here.
Here. Priorities list, discussion possible action by city council pertaining to city council's strategic priorities. Anyone wish to bring up anything on their priorities list? Hearing none. Discussion possible action by city council pertaining to city council's individual priorities. Minutes, I'd entertain a motion.
We need further motion.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Consent agenda, the consent portion of the agenda is a means of expediting routine matters that must be acted upon by council. All items approved will be done by one undebatable motion, passed unanimously. Any item may be removed for debate on the request of any member of the council. Items removed from the consent portion become the first item of the business under the regular agenda. I entertain.
We approve the consent portion of the agenda.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearings, we have an unscheduled this evening. Hearing for citizens. Members of the public may address city council on matters which are not listed on the council's agenda. The city council cannot discuss or take legal action on any matters during the call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual members of council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed council, or may ask staff to review a matter, and may ask the matter to be put on a future agenda. Citizens may also use informational request rooms, which are available. All city council meetings are recorded. Also this evening, for public notice, we have a, the council member, the council meeting is being filmed and streamed live, and that's what that camera is in the back, so I'm just letting you know as a disclaimer that that is happening, and that is happening at the request of the individuals, and that is allowed, so, just for your information. At this time, if there is a, anyone in the audience wishes to address the council on any item at all, please raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and then you can approach the podium and give us your name at that time of the year. Here we have two, so I'm going to recognize the gentleman right here first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick, good evening. I was here for the working session on the Horseshoe Bend, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I agree that there's a lot of improvements that need to be made out there that, you know, can help attract more visitors and take care of what we have out there. I do want to say that my family and I, we've enjoyed being able to go out there for free. It's a beautiful area, we love hiking out there. So I would just ask that, however things get set up, that we keep the citizens of Page in mind and try to keep fees as minimal as possible. Also, with regards to that, I heard mention of a possible land swap. I don't know what the entire details are around that, but kind of a provocative idea would be maybe entertaining swapping that land, since the park service and the city seem to both be in agreement that there should be fees out there. Possibly swap that for, say like the chains area, and then the city would have access to the lake and could do something with that area. Just an idea. Another idea to toss out that might be of a consideration is, Page isn't really set up right now for vendors, but it would be nice to maybe see an area kind of like Horseshoe Bend, or the chains, or somewhere like that, set aside that, you know, vendors, food trucks, people who have proper credentials and licensing could set up for small fee and enjoy the foot traffic as well of tourists coming through and wanting to purchase items from them. That's all I had, thank you.
So I need your name and address for the record, please.
My apologies, Darby McNunn, and my address is fifteen hundred Grand View.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Third Clark, Page, Arizona. I'm going to only take up a couple minutes of your time tonight. I'd like to once again thank the Canyon Club for the memorial wall that we out, out here. It's one of the best things that ever happened to the city since I've been here in Page since eighty-five. What I want to do is I want to kind of remind everybody about that memorial wall, for the people who died in the line of duty in the city of Page. The month of June was a particularly bad month for this town. Major Douglas B. LeFevere, pilot of the United States Air Force, missing in action, Vietnam. Twenty-ninth June nineteen seventy-eight. I have a hard time with this one. June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, Sergeant Daryl Curley, murdered, domestic violence call, he's a friend of mine, that's the one thing when he died. June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight, classic lifeguard helicopter, the crew as well as the flag medical aircrew, and two patients died in a mid-air collision. One patient was one of my brothers. Montana hotshot crew sustained a spider bite. He had an allergic reaction to spider bite. The aircraft hit him in from out in the field with one of the fire helicopters, the clinic hit the rim. They transported him over a classic lifeguard, flew him in flagstaff, when the plane, the two helicopters crashed. Still remains one of the deadliest emergency medical air crashes in American history. Out of this, I knew three of those people. In addition, I'd like to remind people that this was also the Grand Mountain Hotshots anniversary on June thirtieth, twenty thirteen, Yarnell Hellfire. It's the sixth deadliest firefighter disaster in the U.S. and deadly in America, right, deadly in Arizona. Now I'd say I knew the sergeant, fantastic man, didn't deserve to die that time. Some figures in this country just never die, just never die up.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to process? Yes, sir.
About to catch your state eighty-sixty-four directly. I would, I also attended the work session prior to, and I would state from my standpoint, I think it'd be an absolute mistake for us to do any kind of land swap with the park service in that area, although I do like a lot of the things I heard as far as joint use, especially with the park service presence at the entrance there. I think that's a great idea, I also agree with Councilmore that I, we've got land that we can't sell now. We really don't want to give away some of our prime premium land that we have. So I would be in very big favor of working jointly with them going forward, but definitely not doing a land swap. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address council this evening? I thank those individuals that did speak, and Larry, thank you for reminding us of the month of June. Those are all our, thank you, we appreciate that. Under unfinished business, we have an unscheduled this evening. Under due business, we have a presentation of a certificate of achievement of excellence for financial reporting to the City of Page Finance Department. We've done these over the years, and we've had a good number of them. They don't come lightly from the financial reporting agency. The City of Page has fair, fairly well moved the last seven years, and prior to that, we had a few dry years, but we're glad that our finance department is top-notch and can get these awards. I'd like to present the award to the Director of Finance, and I would appreciate all that they do in our finance department and in our budgeting process. This is probably the busiest time of the year for our finance department. They're one of the ones that are turning out the lights when they go home at night and locking the door behind them, because they are spending long hours preparing our budget for us, which is on the agenda this late at the evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Linda Watson if she'd step forward, and I'd like to present this to her and our finance department on behalf of council.
Is this where I could be taller? It's the only chance I ever get, but I wouldn't do that. Thank you, the finance department, and I really appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda, I would like to ask council's indulgence, and it's about the budget, and what I would like to do is take that item and move it down under item five on our agendas. That way, we can have discussion on two possible items that are on the agenda that might change our budget discussion. That would be agreeable to council, I would do that. The next item of business is discussion possible action by city council pertaining to annual maintenance and support for Casell Accounting Software, Microsoft Office three six five email office system. That changes the way I got my book laid out. Paige, please.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So this is a pretty easy one, it's our annual maintenance department software for our award-winning accountings. So, of course, they're happy with the software and the Office three sixty-five licensing, which is our email and all of our office licensing for the city. So, you have any questions?
Any questions, we'd entertain.
Mayor motion approve the annual maintenance and support for Casell Accounting Software and Microsoft Office three sixty-five email office system.
Second. We have a motion, second, any further question or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, most secure, and so. Thank you. Next off, the item of discussion possible action by city council pertaining to an update agreement for services between the City of Page and the Chamber of Commerce. Kim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and the public. At the January Community Development Advisory Board meeting, the Chamber at Page Lake Powell submitted a proposal for additional funding for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. The Chamber's request is for twenty-five thousand dollars in funding, which is an increase of ten thousand dollars over the past funding of fifteen thousand dollars. The Chamber's request is based on costs associated with the participation in local events and familiarization tours, primarily for journalists visiting the Page area. At this meeting, the Community Development Advisory Board considered the proposal by the Chamber to increase their funding from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars for the services related to economic development, and the board voted unanimously, with two members absent, to recommend approval of the request. The fiscal impact is in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, which again is ten thousand dollars more than previous years. The revised agreement is in your packet, and the revisions to the previous agreement, the substantive, I will say, are related to the cost or the reimbursement that the Chamber will receive for the services rendered, as well as Exhibit A, and I apologize, somewhere along the line, Exhibit A got lost, and this got out, we add that back into the official document. But it goes through basically the events that they do, the things, the other things that they do for the city, a couple of new things that they've been doing in the past year that they haven't been doing previously. They've really gotten involved in booking familiarization tours for the city, and this has really, this lowered some of our expenses, because the Chamber is able to negotiate the, everything to be contributed for no cost. And so that has saved us some money there. And then also too, they have played a very large part in getting the farmers market going, and they are the fiscal agent for that, and the executive director is very involved. She's been there every day that I know of since the farmer's market has started. And so, those are the primary changes. The city attorney did take a look at the agreement and changed some of the language, just from a legal perspective. It didn't really change anything substantively, and I can't tell you exactly what all those are, but pretty minor changes. So with that, Judy Cryant, the executive director, is here this evening, and I would stand for questions, or Jimmy is here also.
Yeah, so I was just looking over the contract here, and potentially I'm missing it. But essentially, item B of the general provisions, it essentially says objectives identified in this agreement, and then up top talks about a more descriptive portion in Exhibit A. Is Exhibit A, is anybody else seeing that?
That's the proposal for memorizing of understanding the Chamber of Page Lake Powell, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, was in your packet, which is correctly behind the agreement.
So we can approve the Community Development's five works recognition and want to work twenty-five thousand, play filed in the document.
We have the motion, second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
Discussion. I, I'm in favor of the agreement, I think it's, Chamber does a great job. I don't, I'm not in love with Exhibit A particularly. I think that, for one thing, we, we've sort of made a statement that we were not going to monetarily support events that weren't a sanctioned city event. There's only one out of the events that they're really working on that is what I would consider a city sanctioned event, and that's the Fourth of July. Car Show, the Berlin Regatta Fair, those. So I guess, just in principle, Exhibit A, I, I like the agreement in the way it's written that we're essentially providing payment in exchange for services rendered related to tourism, business development, community public. But when we specifically say these events, But when we specifically say these events, personally, I think the fan tours are a huge benefit to the city. I think that the work and the effort they put forth in the farmers market, those are great things, but I don't know that we need to identify them specifically.
I would agree.
I just don't want to see this set of precedent that they've got to sit down and, you know, if they want to support a car show, then support a car show. As far as the vendor fair, if you lose money on it, too bad for you. Don't come to me to reimburse it, you know? I mean, if you can't make money on a seven boost to have a vendor make money, then you need to get different vendors. I don't think that's a, you know, I almost look at that and say, well, I really don't want to, I don't want to pay the money because I think you could do a better job of what you're doing, but I like the agreement. I think it's fair. I just don't think Exhibit A really does you any good.
Judy, what do you want to comment?
Sure.
So, on that, just to give you an opportunity to respond, I mean, have you listed the $25,000 in order, and you had kind of earmarked it to pay for these events specifically? I mean, did this not include any additional overhead, additional staff members in order to help with the fan tours and help with the tourism aspects that the Chamber will take care of? Or was it specifically to these events in here and the fan tours?
One of the things I want to address to Councilman Warner on the vendors, one of the problems that we're having in town getting vendors during this, these types of shows, our room rates are so high, nobody will come. We found that people want to come, but they're coming for one night, but the rates are extremely high because this is our busiest season, so it has been a struggle. And because people want the events, we're just trying to figure out which is the best way. The Balloon Regatta, a two-day event doubled our money on what we had to pay for all of our extras for rent, if we have to get stuff out of Flagstaff, so that was all sort of what we included it on. The fan tours, a lot of time, as Kim had stated, and us getting those going. Farmers Market, we're not getting, I'm not getting paid for Farmers Market. I'm basically volunteering my time to go out there and do that every Saturday. But the extra $25,000 really is just going to pick up a lot of the difference, and I look at this as a, for the community. People want stuff to do. I've got people in town right now with kids, and they're saying, what is there to do in town? So, if the Chamber of Commerce can provide that, I feel really confident about that and feel very good about it in presenting it to the council.
And can you speak specifically on your plan within the agreement for tourism, business development, community development, all those things that are listed within the agreement as terms for the city donating money towards the Chamber?
Strongly into the tourism part of it. I, that's my whole goal.
So, I guess is what, what are the, what are the details? What's the plan?
Well, the plan is, is I'm working towards getting more, we just, I just did a report right now. We brought in $17,000 this year just since January for the tour companies. We figured out, we did a report up on that. There was 17 grand that came into the pockets of our members because we booked for our members. So, I, we're looking at what can we do for the members, what can we do for the business district? And that's my goal, is to bring whatever I can business-wise and get out and be involved in anywhere that I possibly can, regional economic conference, any of those things that are tied into the businesses, because that's what the Chamber of Commerce is all about. So, anything that we do at the Chamber is directed towards the business community, and there's other things out there. I know the Downtown Association's been talked about, bringing the Chamber into that. Love to have that get going seriously, because that is another issue that I hear all the time. What are we doing for downtown? Let us get involved. Let us help, let, bring the Chamber in, and we'll do everything we can.
Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment. I've seen since it's taken two, three years, a big, a big increase in a boost in the Chamber since it proves a lot. I want to say, I think you're doing a wonderful job, and I see it in, you're hanging out in a lot of different things, a lot of different areas, and it's all been very positive, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I would just mention this to the board as a stand-up here. You know, when you go into agreement for contracted services, everything that's listed in here is very vague. When you say the word community development, educational development, economic development, I mean, those words absolutely do have meaning, but for me personally, in the future, and I would agree that the Chamber does a very good job of this, but it would be much easier for us moving forward, or for me, I'll speak for myself, if we had a good, solid plan located within your budget that you guys currently have or moving on into the future, to understand what your goals are and your objectives moving forward towards achieving these things within these different categories. So, I just wanted to kind of mention that publicly to the board.
If there's any other comment or question, I think we have a motion. Do you have a motion? Second. Call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, motion carries. Man, let's say thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Councilman.
Discussion possible acts by city council pertaining to 2017, 2018 John Wesley Powell Memorial Museum Service Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The John Wesley Powell Museum and Visitor Center acts as a base of tourism with their knowledgeable employees and volunteers who provide helpful information, regional brochures, and trip planning for tourists. The agreement for services between the City of Page and the John Wesley Powell Memorial Museum outlines specific expectations of both parties, continues partnership in this renewable on an annual basis. The tour agreement expires on June 30th, 2017. The proposed agreement is in front of you. There are no proposed changes to the agreement. Funding proposed is to stay at the same level of $70,000 and services are to remain the same. At January 24th, 2017 meeting of the Community Development Advisory Board, it was, the agreement was considered, actually not the agreement, but the way out of the services agreement was considered, and the board unanimously voted with two members absent to recommend approval of the agreement. The agreement is attached. Again, it is the same as in previous years. I won't go through it specifically. There's a, the hours of operation are identified here. The method of payment is identified within the agreement as it is a fairly extensive of services that they provide to the city for tourism purposes. So, with that, I will stand for questions, and the executive director will write this here this evening, and she can provide questions or answers to your questions as well.
Comment or question from the council?
Yes, again, this is just small stuff within the contract, but number nine says, museum agrees to meet your, the city's tourism executive director. Is that, that something we should change, or are you or another staff member acting as that?
Sure. We certainly could change that terminology. We do it regularly with the executive director to go over the contract, to go over services, those kinds of things, and the director also provides regular reports to the Community Development Advisory Board.
Okay, but I guess what I'm asking is who would, who do you think would step in for that?
I guess I would just maybe, if we want to change the language, I guess we could probably just put Community Development Department staff or something like that, and we don't want to have a tourism director, and we have a Community Development Coordinator. We could certainly put that title in there as well.
Well, maybe if we strike the words tourism executive director to and just leave director, community development, add the words community development.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Which item is that, please?
Nine.
I might be misinformed, and Billy, you can tell me, but I have a person has a business and kind of goes to the number of 10 and 11, that the museum agrees to acknowledge the city as the major sponsor of the visitor center component, and the city agrees to endorse the museum as the official visitor center. And the role of the visitor center is to kind of tell visitors what's out there, but this particular person said that he spoke to you, had a business, and your response was, well, I'll have to run that through our board to see if we want to endorse that business. That was troubling to me. I don't know, again, I don't know if that's entirely true, but do, as a, I would hope that we're not running through things through a board to make a decision whether we're going to endorse that as an activity that they can do or don't do.
My recent concern is we're a hot commodity right now. We're, we're big in the world of tourism. Every time you turn around and you see one of our, our local attractions plastered as a screen saver or in a brochure, there's a new article about how, you know, the growth of tourism in town, how, you know, I've got those numbers, you've got those numbers. We're on somebody's to-do or bucket list, so what we're seeing is we're seeing new vendors. We're seeing new people coming into town, but we don't know who they are. We don't know if they're a fly-by-night operation. We don't know if they're conducting safe activities for our visitors, and at our most recent board meeting, I brought that same issue up because I've been approached by people recently, and I don't, I don't know anything about them. We've had relationships with many vendors for many years, so we're familiar with what they're out there doing, and we feel good about promoting that, and so I took it to the board, and I told this gentleman and someone else recently as well. It's been more than one occasion. How do we handle this? How do we vet these new vendors that are coming into town? Do we just open the doors and say, heck yeah, everybody, come on and make money off of our area and not know who they are or done if they're offering a good, solid product? So, I did take it to the board recently, and I told that guy that I was, and he, I told him exactly what I just told you. That's what I told him. I think maybe because of the nature of the business, that might have been what you're referring to, because it has a side that's a little controversial. But it's the same for anybody, no matter what you're offering. I just got concerned, like, how are we going to deal with this issue? If this is the tip of the iceberg, and I feel it is, how are we going to deal with all these new people coming to town and we don't know anything about them? Are we going to just, you know, book and hope it all works out? That was my concern, and I'm not sure that we still have a concrete answer on it, quite honestly. We had discussion at the board recently, so that's, that's what was going on here.
I, I feel that would be appropriate, because I think if we're asking, if the museum and visitor center is going to refer our visitors to a business for whatever purpose, they need to make sure that business is viable and providing a product that's going to be the best interest of the visitor. If, if there's no process in place to, to look at referrals and who are we referring to, I, I think you have to have some sort of a process there that legitimizes the business, because that's, we're, we're seeing our visitors to them, and that's a lasting impression that we're, that they're going to get. Do we want that to be a good impression, or, you know? If we...
Right. I give Mike, but on this particular instance, I see where a lot of politics could enter into it, and I would just advise the museum and the board, if it's a matter of safety, I think it's great. If, if, if it's tainted with politics, I think no. I would just say, be very careful of that one.
Well, we do have a, I guess, a little bit of a history, being by the nature of, you know, museum and nonprofit organization, we, we probably don't want to involve ourselves in any politics. You're absolutely right about that.
I think that question could be solved really easily if we move forward with our business licenses. So, we've been working on, and we, we, once we get that done, then essentially there, the answer's been made for it. With your license with a business license in the City of Page, we're going to refer you.
Right, and you should have this, this approval, and just have to go forward, I agree.
And in the meantime, that, that might be the business registration until we have something more on the table, so. Any other questions or comment?
Mayor, we approve the contract for John Wesley Powell Memorial Museum. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion or comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Billy, of the $70,000 from the city, what portion of the budget for the John Wesley Powell Museum is that?
What we're doing right now is, we don't separate it out. We never have. We have currently, from the worksheet that I gave you, I can show you right now, our increase for this year, 56% increase in our contribution from the City of Page, and as you can see, our payroll expense right now is a 56% increase for this year. You know, this is a, a projection, again, on my part, looking at the budget ahead for the year and see where we're going to be, but I think we're, we're pretty close to covering our payroll expenses, which was primarily the idea because of the request that we extend our operating hours. Previously, we had tightened our budgets because we just didn't have the money to, quite frankly, keep up with the demand in personnel and hours. Am I way too loud? And so, you know, when we go back in the history for the last couple of years, that's where we were. We tightened our budget. When I took over a couple of years ago, Mark had been the director and was, you know, we kept throwing bodies at the, the people that are walking through our door. We'd extended our hours, but we just didn't have the money to continue it. It wasn't sustainable. So, that's when we came to the city and asked for the increase in money, and consequently, we agreed to do more extended hours. This is actually our first season, our first full season, April through October, 70 days a week, all day, every day. So, that's why we didn't ask for any more money too, because this is going to be kind of our baseline. Now, we get to see where we go forward from this point. So, in order to support those hours, and we do employ about 10 people, you know, eight months out of the year, because we start the training, we're open for the seven months with those extended hours. We're, we've got about 10 people that we do employ with, with that figure. Everybody's part-time. We also have our volunteers, and next year, I actually anticipate, because of the trend from this year, starting at another month earlier, I want to, I want to open those hours up in March. That's, we're that busy. We're that busy.
So, back to the question, I mean, it, does that mean that the budget is fluid throughout the year, or?
It's, it's a, it's close to taking care of our payroll costs. That's what it was, that's what it was based on. We are very close to that figure. I mean, it fluctuates a little bit, but we're pretty much right on, yeah.
So, quick question. Billy, this financial information you're giving to us is a six-month?
It is. Most, most of, yes, this is based from January through May, so I tried to use my most recent numbers. You know, I included the, the tourism visitation numbers that hopefully everyone's receiving every month, because I provide those to community development, and I know it's part of the larger packet that is provided, that takes all of the numbers into consideration. So, our page, I just wanted to bring to your attention to reiterate the growth. We're having a banner here. We had a banner winter, and then the second page that, and I, and again, I think that everybody's probably pretty aware of that. I probably don't need to, you know, labor that point, that we're increasing this year compared to last year. I believe it was 55%. I'm just working off memory here. So, the worksheet that I brought you that actually breaks down our growth is something that had been addressed from the council and also community development. You know, again, we were tightening our belt the first time around, all right? First year was, again, cut, cut the bleed. We've got the money. We're opening these hours. Let's move forward and see if we can do a little better with our numbers. So, I did break it down into the, the categories that you see on purpose, so I could show you some growth, 74% in bookstore sales, 93% in our artist consignment. so I could show you some growth, seventy-four percent in bookstore sales, ninety-three percent, um, in our artist consignment, tour commission sales, seventy percent up. We have our direct costs are, uh, impacted for a couple of different reasons. One of them is because we had tightened our belt so much, we were down so low, uh, in 2016 with our bookstore and consignment cost of goods, uh, but we brought that back up. We got pretty, we got pretty aggressive with stocking, and we do that at the first part of the year. So we've still got a season to show more improvement in those numbers too. And again, that is something that was specifically asked for, uh, and a concern by council. You know, are we doing things the right way? And, and we're trying, we're still a nonprofit, I still haven't found the, the goose that lays the golden egg. But the trend is going in the right direction. The rest of that worksheet also just, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, increased, increased payroll costs and increased, um, operating expenses that, that go along with the, um, increase in the number of tourists that we're serving.
So roughly, the four, the thirty-five thousands roughly forty percent, over forty percent?
That wasn't your, I'm sorry, I, I asked that again. I could have done the math myself.
Any other questions?
I sat down with Billy this last week and had this similar discussion and stuff. I have, I've not been a, a fan of the, the seventy thousand dollars that we've been spending in the visitors bureau in the museum. And she and I discussed my thoughts on that. And my concern still is somewhat the same, is that the museum's mission is not based on visitation. What we tried to do by adding to what they were doing for us was to increase their numbers of people coming in, in hopes that we would increase their income. What, what I see, think I'm seeing, and I discussed this with Billy, is we've increased the volume of people in the door, but unfortunately, people that go there are seeking a service, not necessarily on a shopping spree. So they're, they're not spending money, we're just giving them more traffic, which creates more hours of labor for them. So proportionately, we're part of the problem by putting more people in there because it's taking them more hours to, to accomplish the mission that we've asked them to do. I just, I, I wish we might be able to help them do more in retail sales or something like that. But I don't think, it's not the nature of a museum for that. But I, and I think that's, that's the burden for them. But that's not according to this, I mean, their, their sales have gone up one hundred and forty-six percent. How much has their labor gone up too? How many positions did you add over this, or hours did you add? So that's, that's, I think, that one off is...
It is kind of a, it's kind of a wash in one, at one respect, but the bigger, I think the bigger thing here is that the more people we help, the more people that come through our door, the more it benefits our community. And that's, that's working, again, that's working. I, we're happy to do it, it is mutually beneficial. Do we want to make more money? Heck, yeah. I'm, I'm happy, you know, Duke and Corey, two successful businessmen. Maybe it's time we sat down and had another chat, and maybe there's a way that you guys could help shed some light on our business plan or lack of it. We have to stay true to our mission statement, we are a museum, first and foremost. Um, the, the visitor center is a service that we provide that benefits the community. And again, we, we are good at it, we are succeeding at it, it's definitely in the future of Page, there's no doubt about it. Mayor, you and I, when we were talking the other day. I see the day someday that this town may spend millions of dollars to be building a brand-new gorgeous visitor center. Uh, Carl Hayden just spent a million and a half to renovate, so they are obviously banking on the future as well here. We could certainly look at doing more things than we have. We've, we've done, we've tried to, we've, well, we have accomplished, we've increased our, our tourism, uh, our, our tours that we book. We've tried new products in the bookstore, we've tried new approaches in the bookstore, created a reservation position specifically, uh, taking care of the volume of phone calls that we have coming in. So we're growing, you know, it's a, it's an evolution. It keeps, it keeps going on, and I see it going on into the future as well. Um, I, I hope you'll give us the funding to continue helping, because we're helping the community, we're helping everybody. We're helping fund this money and this budget that you're talking about right now by doing what we're doing every day. I'm happy to do it. I love this town, I absolutely adore this town. I get sad when people, when I hear people talk about how Page used to be, like, it used to be prettier, or, or the streets were cleaner, or, you know? And it's like, this town is wonderful, can we do better? Of course, of course we can. I think that tourism is going to be funding a lot of our improvements as we, as we move along and move forward. I would absolutely, though, welcome, again, any, any help in doing my job and doing it better for the community. And, um, we just have to stay true to that mission statement. We're a nonprofit, we have to be careful that everything that we do in the bookstore, everything that we, you know, we can tie it into our mission statement, but, uh, yeah.
So there was, so there was an increase in, in dollar amount of museum admissions, which also includes the memberships and things like that, but that, that's a dollar amount. I mean, had, you had mentioned this last year, and I wanted to see if you had a new perspective on it, that you said being a tourism visitor center potentially hinders being the John List and Powell Museum. I mean, do, do, is there, I mean, what is the philosophy of yourself and, and your board? To be both, to be able to be successful in both, to stay with your mission statement, be able to serve all those people that we're asking you to serve, as well as still be a museum, you know, have a, a great exhibit in there and offer that service to the public?
We, we do have to walk the line sometimes, and we have to keep that in mind, um, that that is our primary mission. Uh, we do benefit from it, again, it's a, it's a viable bit, business, like I said, we, we employ ten people for what will be probably nine months out of next year if everything continues. Um, so there's another benefit right there. We keep busy, we have a full staff. If funding were to go away tomorrow for the visitor center, we would still continue it along the same lines with, um, serving the visitors with information, we would continue to book tours. We would do it at a reduced, you know, our hours would reduce, our personnel would reduce, but we would go back to how it probably started in the first place. We would still be a museum and we would still survive. The board's had this conversation many times, you know? It, it's, it's a balance, it's, it's, we could, we could be just a museum and still survive. You're not funding, rest assured, you're not funding or supporting the museum by any stretch of the imagination. The museum will continue. The, the museum is a small-town museum, hopefully, we might be able to grow as we, you know, all, I think, anticipate the way that this town is, is going and, and our future. Right now, it's nice and, again, mutually beneficial that we do it with, with the support of the city and are able, again, to help the entire community by serving the visitors that we do. To take that away would be, I think, a step backwards.
Counsel?
No, it's going to call for a question.
Okay. He's called for the question, and I'm just going to say, I'm not advocating to cut the budget, but I want to make sure I, that we understand that you are serving your mission statement. You are a museum and visitor bureau, and you are servicing all customers that we've been asking you to do. That being said, I entertain a motion.
We have a motion, Marty, we take it a second, it's just a question.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it. And I mean what I say about having more conversation. I, I would be absolutely willing and delighted and transparent with more of our, you know, numbers for the, in detail. And you guys could probably show me a thing or two, I'd have appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving back to item two, which we moved to after the discussion of the last two items. Discussion, possible action by city council pertaining to adopting preliminary budget for 2017, 2018, Resolution 1187-17, and set a public hearing date for July 26th, 2017. Wow, you're presenting this.
I'm, I'm prepared to present.
Good. Crystal?
Did you want to, just want to make a motion?
Yes, we need a, a motion to introduce Resolution 1187-17 by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to introduce Resolution 1187-17 by title only.
Next second. Motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Madam Quirk, would you please introduce 1187-17?
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Page, Coquinno County, Arizona, tentatively adopting the estimated revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the state council for your guidance and support throughout the development of this budget. The budget represents months of collaboration and hard work of employees at all levels of our organization. And I'd like to specifically thank Linda Watson and her staff for all of the hours and efforts they have put in. A week ago, uh, you all sat through a very long presentation, um, of the budget. And so, um, based on our discussion, I can make some changes, uh, and I'm not going to go through that presentation again. Save us about forty-five minutes. Um, Arizona state law requires that honor before the third Monday of, in July of each fiscal year, that the council must adopt a preliminary budget. Once the preliminary budget has been adopted, expenditures may not, uh, be increased upon final adoption. It may, however, be increased. Once the preliminary budget has been adopted, Schedule A, which you have, uh, must be published at least once a week for at least two consecutive weeks following the adoption. The preliminary budget must be fully itemized in accordance with the forms supplied by the auditor general and entered upon the, the council meeting minutes. The total for the preliminary fiscal year 2018 for all funds, including the enterprise funds, is, uh, thirty-six million, five hundred and twenty, or five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine. And that includes all of the three major, um, funds, general fund, capital fund, and enterprise funds, as well as the ten special revenue funds and the three additional enterprise funds. The preliminary, um, fiscal eighteen budget, which has been prepared consistent with council's direction following the budget discussions, May fifteenth, May twenty-second, May twenty-fourth, and June twenty-first. Since the meeting last Wednesday, we made the following changes. You know, uh, we discussed all but one. We reduced building maintenance line item by sixty thousand, uh, and that was removing the boiler. And then we will fund the painting of the library out of the library fund, of library department budget. Uh, we reduced police patrol line item overtime by twenty thousand. We reduced general services line item contingency by twenty-five thousand. We reduced human resources line item recruitment and retention by thirteen thousand. And then, uh, the one we haven't discussed is I needed to increase capital projects line item, uh, Fifteenth Streets for the Lake Powell Boulevard sidewalk project by seventy-three thousand, seventy-five dollars. And that includes the cost of putting those lights in that we talked about at the meeting. So in, uh, unless the city council, uh, has any questions, um, I've completed what I put together for today.
Counsel? One more question, Crystal, um, I don't recall talking about reducing the contingency.
Uh, well, yeah, we didn't, we didn't talk, oh, that's true, we didn't talk about that. I was trying to get that, um, final number under four million. And then, and so we, we made the change, and then I added seventy-three thousand after that. So we didn't go back and add the twenty-five thousand dollars. But the, um, the contingency would still be three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is adequate. More than adequate, I hope.
Anyone else?
Who could adopt Resolution 1187-17? Second.
We have a motion, multiple second, and further question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a preliminary budget, and we will move forward from there.
We need to have a motion to set the public hearing.
Yes, we can.
I'm going to reset a public hearing date at 5:26, 2017, 5:30 P.M. A special city council meeting for the fiscal year, the 2018 budget.
We have a motion in a second, and further discussion. All in favor of public hearing date July 26th, 2017, 5:30 P.M. For special meeting in fiscal year eighteen budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then awards, we have none scheduled this evening. Business from the mayor, we have none. Business from the manager, none scheduled. Business from attorney, none. Business from council, we have a bunch. First item of business under business from council is discussion and possible action by city council pertaining to appointments to the Page Airport Advisory Board. This evening, we have before us, uh, the fact that we have, um, four openings on our airport board, and at this particular time, we have no applicants to consider. So I'm going to pose this, to have people in the audience. If there's someone in the audience that wishes to serve on our airport board this evening, please raise your hand, we'll recognize you, and we will take and, and make a nomination from the diocese this evening. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to be on our airport board? Mr. Clark, is that a self-nomination for airport board?
Yes, it is.
Uh, is there anyone else?
I'll second that.
Is there anyone else that's interested in serving on our airport board? Being none, I would motion to appoint Larry Clark to the Page Airport Advisory Board with the term ending June thirtieth, 2020. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Or Larry, would you like to speak to us about yourself?
I can always talk about myself. One of my qualifications for that is that I was a, I'm actually a retired firefighter from the United States government, and I was an air ops boss, all kinds of different bosses in airport operations. Airport to this city is very important, I've attended many, many of their, um, board meetings in the past, um, just out of interest in being interested in what's happening in our city. And, uh, I think I can do a good job of helping out with the administration of that. If nobody else is going to try it, I'll do it. Thank you.
Larry, you're not serving on any more other boards, are you, at this time?
There's a reappointment for a while.
Substance abuse.
Substance abuse, okay.
And advisory to something that's never ever met, since then, I don't even remember the name of it.
The retirement board.
Retirement board.
Retirement board.
All right.
But if anybody else would like to... But if anybody else would like to, I'll be more than glad to step aside.
Well, we need four, Larry.
We only do it once.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to accept Larry to the advisory board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Larry.
You didn't notice this, Larry, but you got the longest term available.
Discussion possible action by city council pertaining appointments to the Page Community Center Advisory Board. At this time, we have two incumbents that are interested in continuing to serve on the board. That's Trina Keltmeyer and Don Duggins. We also have one other opening on that board. If there's one... Anyone in the audience that wishes to be nominated from DAIS, please raise your hand. We'll recognize you if you think so. Seeing none, I'll motion to appoint Tina Keltmeyer to the Page Community Center Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2020. Second. We have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion to appoint John Duggins to the Page Community Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2020. Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible action by city council pertaining appointments to the Page Community Development Advisory Board. All right, this is where it gets interesting. We have three incumbents. We have one incumbent that wishes to continue, and we have three others that are interested applicants, and we have three positions. Besides the incumbent who is publicly interested, we have Steve Blevins, Darby McNutt, and Michael Tabaka have all sent. Mr. Tabaka was... He submitted his application earlier, and he didn't know that he could put in for more than one board, so he turned in the one that you see before you there requesting to serve on this board also. So...
Let me add, move to appoint Michael Tabaka to the Community Development Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on Mr. Tabaka? Mr. Tabaka with us this evening? No, I think he had... He works for SRP. I think he's working tonight. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of appointing Michael Tabaka to the Community Development Advisory Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Quick question. Who's not reapplying on that board?
The end one, and...
Yeah, yeah, and then...
Mr. Bob.
They both, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Bubba Ketchison to the Community Development Advisory Board.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor of appointing Bubba Ketchison to the Community Development Advisory Board, re... Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have one further opening. I entertain a motion, and we have two applicants.
Motion to appoint Steve Blevins to the Community Development Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2020.
We have a motion. That was a motion. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'll make a motion to appoint Darby McNutt to the Community Development Advisory Board. Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mr. McNutt is in the audience this evening, and Mr. McNutt, would you like to address the board? The council, excuse me.
Good evening again. I just wanted to say that I hope I have the opportunity to be on this advisory board. I see it as an opportunity to further serve the community. I have several skills that I believe are fairly valid for the advisory board. Currently, I work for the Bureau of Reclamation. I'm the IT manager for the Upper Colorado Power Office, and which supports Arizona, New Mexico, Colorado, Utah, and Wyoming. As the IT manager, I'm responsible for managing very large budgets. The systems that I support are on the order of thirty million in value. So, I'm very familiar with budgeting and how to work with finances. Other than that, I also have a interest in anthropology. I'm finishing my anthropology degree, and I believe that as an anthropologist, I can bring a unique cultural perspective to the board that can actively represent Page as a community.
Thank you.
Aye.
We have a motion in a second on the floor for Mr. McNutt to appoint him to the Community Development Advisory Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome. It will be interesting for you, and we appreciate your service on that. We go from not having enough people to having more than enough people. And it doesn't necessarily mean that those people that we don't accept aren't appreciated. And Steve, I know you're serving on some of our boards, and we appreciate you. You were on this one here. We appreciate you very much and the work that you've done. But as you can see, we're trying to draw a new blood.
Absolutely. I'm fine with that now.
Thank you, sir. And this is... This goes to what I just said. Discussion possible action by city council pertaining to appointments to the Page Library Board. We have three positions open. We have one person that has expressed an interest to continue to serve on the board, and we have two vacant slots with no applicants. At this time, I make a motion to reappoint Regina Santelli to the Page Library Advisory Board with a term ending June 30, 2020. Second. We have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, if there's anyone that's in the audience that wishes to be nominated for... to serve on our library board, if you'd raise your hand, we'll recognize you, and we would be honored to do so. For those new people that are in the room, which I happen to know there are a couple, the library... Our library is a designated... I'm going to blow this. Aren't I crystal moist?
It used to be a five star.
Five star, and I think that it is still rated as a four star. So, we have a very, very good library, and that is in need of direction. So, if there's anybody that's out there or you know of anybody, we're still taking applications until we fill these boards. That being said, and I see no hands, we're moving on to discussion possible action pertaining to Parks and Recreation. This is... This is one of those ones that everybody likes. We have three of our members of the Parks and Rec Board who have asked to be retained and would like to reserve. And we have three openings, three that want to return, and we also have two applicants that want to serve. So, this is... So, I would go down there. I would entertain a motion. We've got... Excuse me. Let me read these. We have Paul Ostapuck now serving, wishes to return. We have Brian Carey now serving, wishes to return. We have Steve Monger serving, wishes to return. And we have two applicants, Steve Blevins and Michael Tabaka.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Paul Ostapuck for a term ending July 30, 2020 to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
We have a motion. Second. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further question or discussion? You said July 30th or June 30th? June 30th.
June 30th.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I move to reappoint Brian Carey to the Parks and Rec Board for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion, question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion or a simple motion. I'll motion to reappoint Steve Monger to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term ending June 30, 2020. Second. In the second. We have a motion in a second. Any further question or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have filled that board. Discussion finding... Discussion possible action by city council pertaining to zoning, planning and zoning commission. We have two openings, and we have two members wishing to continue to serve, and we have no further applicants. So, I would...
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Lyle Debat to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term ending June 30, 2020. All the dates are weird.
It says June 20th. They got a two-week early out.
Going through the end of the month.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Bubba Ketchison to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term ending June 30, 2020.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. Any further discussion, question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We do have term limits, by the way, so things change just because they're there. They're not necess... They're not there forever. We don't have term limits for council, though. We should. We get tired. All right, discussion. Possible action by city council pertaining to Substance Abuse Task Force.
You misinterpreted just...
I did. Okay. Discussion possible action by city council pertaining to appointments for the Board of Adjustments. We have five openings. We have zero applicants. Are you volunteering?
I'm volunteering.
All right. Okay, we have Steve Blevins.
Hey, this... On this background, it says October 26, 2017, regular council meeting. On the background notes, it says October 26, 2017, regular council meeting.
Twenty sixteen.
I think she must have meant 2016 when you reestablished the board.
I didn't know we were... I thought we were just discussing the reestablishment.
We did pass that we were going to reestablish the board and take it out of the council's authority.
As a recommendation.
Well, that was a recommendation based on the League of Cities.
Cities and the council.
Right.
So... So that we can continue on, I'll just take... I'll continue to take names first before we vote. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to serve on the Board of Adjustments? The only caveat there is if you're serving on the Planning and Zoning Board, you probably can't serve on the Board of Adjustments. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Blevins to the Board of Adjustments for a term ending June 30, 2020. Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
So, with this board... Or with this Board of Adjustments not filled, are... Is the council still acting as Board of Adjustments duty happens to come up until all positions are filled, correct?
Until you release, have a quorum.
So, with that, would it be more appropriate to staff this board when there are at least enough applicants to make a quorum? It seems a little awkward that we would staff a board with one member, knowing that's the only member we have. It seems like we... We should.
We could certainly appoint him to the board at this particular time, and the board cannot be acted without a quorum. So, we defer to council until such time as we get other people, and we will continue to search for that. Would that be appropriate to...
I think that would be fine. I think you do either way.
I don't want to take a chance that gives you...
Well, I would just mention one thing, and this is not going to come out right. And my intent is not to take away from any of the other advisory boards, but this one is important. It's crazy important. It has a lot of power here with this particular board.
That's why I was against it being on a board.
I would agree with Dubby that at a minimum, you know, we need to take some time to seek out enough people so that we can truly study. I wouldn't be in favor of having somebody volunteer from the audience, fortunately. I just wanted to mention that, you know?
Okay.
I don't think this board is one that it takes... We take lightly, and that one we're just trying to fill. And I appreciate Steve's initiative and stepping forward, but as Corey stated, this one has power overreaching the council. So, I think that when we look at the authority vested in this board, it needs to be lawyerly and judgerly. Need to be people that really good case studies are out there in municipalities that have had recently just within this... Recently, just, just within this last year, Flagstaff went through a huge, huge issue in the planning and zoning department. It went to the Board of Adjustments and it was incredible how much authority those people rendered on that. Millions, millions of dollars.
That being said. The end. Yes, sir.
Just to make it, it wasn't willy nilly. I applied for the Board of Adjustments over a year and a half ago. And then before you appointed anybody, you guys took it over.
Okay. Yeah.
So it wasn't willy nilly of me to say that.
We appreciate that.
I had applied for already.
And, and how many boards are you serving on at this time?
Just one, the airport board.
Just the one, the airport board. Okay. All right.
We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. And I'll, I'll call for that question. And then we, we may proceed either to appoint or not appoint. If we don't, then we need to continue discussion to move to try to fill that board and seek applicants so that we can move forward with that.
I, I would like to advocate that we, we take a, and certainly entertain Steve as a, as an applicant, but that we, we take a back door to this right now and look at this in its entirety and see if we can staff it accordingly. So otherwise, it's going to default to us anyway, so.
So based on Roberts rules then, we can either motion E and second can withdraw. Or we could have a vote. And it may not be a vote.
Will that be denied?
Pardon? I think John is asking for a call of the question.
I already wanted to do that.
Who made the motion? I made the motion, you did not. I will withdraw my motion.
Second withdrawn.
Second withdrawn. We are going to entertain that, Steve. And we did the first, first applicant that we have. We have your application on file, so we'll do that. And there won't be an appointment to the Board of Adjustments this evening. Discussion possible action by city council pertaining to appointments to the Substance Abuse Task Force. We have three openings on the Substance Abuse Task Force. And we have two members that are on that board that would like to be reappointed. And we have Bee Volvo. And we have Larry Clark that now serves on that board that wished to be reappointed. We have no other applicants and are looking for one other applicant. Is there anyone on the board in the audience that wishes to serve on the Substance Abuse Task Force? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to reappoint Bee Volvo to the Substance Abuse Task Force with a term ending June 30th, 2020. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. I will motion to reappoint Larry Clark to the Substance Abuse Task Force with a term ending June 30th, 2020. We have a second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. We are still looking for one board member for Substance Abuse Task Force. At this particular time, we have a, we're looking for a Page Utility Enterprise Board appointment. We have one opening. And we have one person seeking to be reappointed to the Page Utility Enterprise Board.
I move to introduce Resolution 1186 by Todd Longley.
We have a motion and second to introduce 1186 by Todd Longley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries unanimously. Matt Kirk, would you please introduce Resolution 1186 dash seventeen?
The resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Page, Coquenino County, Arizona, making an appointment to the Page Utility Enterprises Board per Chapter 31, City Organizations, Section 31.41, Page Utility Enterprises Board of the Page, Arizona Code Board Tenses.
I move to adopt Resolution 1186-17. Can you say to be appointed to Page Utility Enterprise Board for a term ending June 30th, 2020?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further question or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. We have no further board appointments this evening, but they will probably be on the agenda the next week. Boards in commission, discussion by city council, has to report a board liaison. We have liaison to like here, report this evening.
I was going to report on the softball. Turn around, I got a few more. I'm waiting for some numbers.
Okay.
Okay, next to you.
All right. Departments, we have none scheduled this evening. Claims, we have none this evening. And there being no further business of the council this evening, I would entertain a motion.
Move it during.
Second, we have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I thank all those in the audience that stayed with us for the whole evening. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.